Did all like to rise please for a pledge of allegiance? Councilor Dolan, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, we'd like to have a moment of silence for the troops serving us home and abroad. Thank you, please be seated. All right. So, let's see. Yeah, I don't have my agenda. It's always nice when you get prepared, right?
Public comment.
Public comment. Mr. Rug, are you in the audience?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Well, that's nice, because we'd love to talk.
It's amazing.
So, how are you gentlemen tonight? We're doing well, how about yourself?
Ah, I'm doing good. And Art Rug, Chair of the Planning Board. And this is about the PUD that was submitted by the Town Council for the Planning Board to review. And Planning Board has not reviewed it at this point, but I had discussed it with staff and amongst ourselves. Our feeling was we'd like to experience this first before we really make any changes, because our question is, what do we change, what we don't want to change? And I think since from the minutes, it seemed that this was not oriented toward Woodmont. It had nothing to do with Woodmont. And what we'd like to do is go through the Woodmont application, see how that goes, and then make changes. And that's how we deal with most of our, I say all of our ordinances anyway. And sometimes we do get into them and find the things that we want to change. And you don't really know what to do or what to change until you actually do it. So, we would like to do this first and then probably maybe have a joint meeting with the Town Council and go over what we've found. I've found one thing already that in the PUD is that we don't have a provision in there for, you know, third-party review. We do in our, both our site plan and subdivision ordinances, but it's also covered by statute. So, it's not a problem, but it's something I'd like to be in there. And usually as we review our ordinances, we look at streamlining things, and that's what we really have paid probably the closest attention to. We like to streamline, but we don't want to compromise the town's, the integrity of our ordinances to protect both the town and, you know, all parties. So, at this point, the, I'd say that the feeling is that we'd like to experience this first, we'd like to see what works with it, what doesn't work with it, then come back with some specific recommendations on what has been submitted. And I think until we experience it, we just don't know. And we tend not to want to meddle with things until we actually, you know, are involved with it.
Understandable.
And that, so that's the position right now. I had asked Andre, because Andre has told me today, Friday, Woodmont had submitted an application. And it's in the review process right now to see if it's complete. And Andre said he didn't want to put it on the November 2nd meeting because it's quite involved. And more likely than not likely, it'll be heard, a public hearing, and also for acceptance as being complete at our first meeting in December, which is December 7th. And I told him, estimate from that point in time, when do you think we would be at least through this? And he said anywhere from probably three to six months. So, probably what will happen is that we'll have a, you know, the hearing, the acceptance and everything, and then we'll decide how to handle it. We'll probably have, at least have a workshop or two, and I'm sure probably more than another public hearing on it. So, it's not going to be an easy process. It's both new for the town, it's new for the Planning Board, it's new for you people, it's new for the applicant also. So, it'll be, there'll be more, there's something definitive on the table now, so that we have something to go after. So, it won't be, the conceptual discussions were rather lengthy and I think it makes Tom, Tom happy. I can see the, the cockles of his heart warmed up there. So, we have something on hand now. I haven't seen it, Andre has it. And the other thing is that he wants to make sure our staff is up to speed on it before that we do anything. And Cynthia is, as he has put it, is learning quickly. So, we've had a personnel changes, as you all know, that Tim left back in August and beginning of October, we have a new planner on. So, we have to get that new planner up to speed also with this. And my feeling, and I think the Planning Board's feeling, I'm not speaking for them, is that definitely we'll go for a third-party review of this, is independent of us, independent of the developer. So, we just want to get educated on what we have first, from the Planning Board perspective, and then we want to be objective about it, and we want to be fair about it.
Understandable. Very understandable. All right. Council have any questions for Art on where we're at right now?
No.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Joe? Okay. Thank you, Art. We appreciate you updating us, and I'm glad to hear. That's probably the most prudent way to go.
I think we need to keep the communications between us close, because you're going to be involved with this as much as we are, as probably much as any citizen in town is, because it's a big thing. And I had a fair, I'd say more than a fair amount of input from people on Old Home Day about it, so. Nothing really negative, but definitely a lot of questions. And that's kind of where we're at, is a lot of questions.
Sure. Will either the town be able to, or will the applicant be able to put their plans up online so that people can see it?
Yes.
Okay.
If, I'm going to make sure it happens, because I said, when I said yes, because I think it should be up there. And I think we should do everything to get this communicated to people, so that they are, you know, informed, or informed as much as possible, or informed as much as they want to be informed.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Art.
Well, we'll be seeing plenty of you in the future anyway.
Oh, I'm sure you will. Thank you, Art.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming out. Okay, we're still in public comment. Anybody here that would like to speak to anything? Okay, going once, twice?
I just have one thing before we go.
Sure.
We got a write to know from the Fire Department. I'd like the council, if the councils agree, I'd like to have them ask the town manager to go to the chairman of the individual committees and boards and remind them in writing what the 91A rules are around emails and conducting meetings. A lot of people probably don't know they send much emails around, and all of a sudden you got a meeting. So, you know, maybe we could ask Dave to get something out to everybody, the chairmans at least, chairpersons, so that everyone can be made abreast of.
Yeah, good suggestion.
Bart made a video a while back, a few years back. I don't know if that's still in the cable studio, maybe we could resurface that.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll speak with Bart, and I'll probably drop something and have Bart look at it, put his finishing touches on it, then we'll distribute it to all the folks, and I'll track down that video. I'm not familiar with that, but I'll try to source that information.
Actually, I think there's something at the LGC on that you can download.
Right.
And instruct people.
Yeah, and I'll have, I'll send it over to Bart as well, so make sure he's in sync with what the LGC attorneys are providing.
Yep.
Great. Okay. All right, council, anything else? Good? Okay. All right, so that's the end of public comment. We have nothing in public hearing tonight, music to my ears. Old business, we have the Hemlock Road incident follow-up for Dave.
Yeah, I just want to circle back around based upon the council discussions, your last meeting, in which representatives of the Fire Department did make a presentation on the Hemlock Road report. And subsequent discussion by the council focused on a number of issues, including staffing, equipment, and hydrant protection. The council has directed me to include four additional positions in my initial FY13 budget. We suspect that cost will be about $327,000, which will be one component of it. The other component, if it's the council's goal to maintain staffing as best we can at 11, then we're going to have to also look at adding overtime funds to get us to 10. Currently, as you know, our goal is to staff at 10. However, due to the level of overtime funds available to us, we oftentimes are at 9 and occasionally at 8. So, we'll also have those numbers for the council's review as we go through the process. The second component of staffing was raised, whether it would be feasible to have volunteers assist the career firefighters in manning the station. That would be very difficult to achieve. I've written in length the memo to the council. I've reached out to three colleagues who have served in Pennsylvania, which traditionally had had a very active volunteer force. It was more of the social center in Pennsylvania, in which the Fire Department, they also had a social club, not on duty obviously, but it was a social center, so they had generations of folks being volunteer firemen. And what they're experiencing in Pennsylvania is what we're seeing here, is that volunteers' jobs, full-time jobs, are calling them further and further away from their homes, so they're not in the area to respond. And what we've experienced, what they're seeing now, is that, you know, 20 and 30 years ago, the Fire Department predominantly responded to fires. But now, when you're called upon to provide EMS, hazmat, and all other sorts of rescues, that also increases the training which is required, which takes the volunteers away from their families more and more. So, therefore, that's why we're seeing not as many citizens are involved on the volunteer force.
People that donate that time.
It's just a matter of time. So, what we're finding in Pennsylvania, which we've seen here a number of years ago, is that they're starting to hire drivers to be the full-time career people who would drive the rigs and the emergency apparatus of the scene, in the hopes of volunteers meeting them. And then they're also now transitioning beyond that to go to career firefighters, simply because there's too much of a burden on a volunteer's time to meet the required training of the state law and also the suggested training on an FPA. So, we found that not to be, not to be unfortunately available to a lot of towns of our size, simply because of training requirements and the distance between where the volunteers work and Londonderry. The other issue is equipment. The council requested a placement in the amount of, for a tanker. A placement has been inserted into the CIP for $350,000 for a tanker. I'm sure we'll have that discussion as the budget progresses. And lastly, is hydroprotection. We had our staff with GIS estimate the amount it would cost to extend municipal water lines throughout the community in order to provide hydroprotection. And the infrastructure investment would be at least $120 million, and our hydrant rental expense would go from the current $406,000 to about $1.1 million. And if you proceeded on that project and you recovered the cost through a frontage assessment, if every linear foot fronted on both sides of the road was available for development, that'd be about a $9 per linear foot frontage assessment every year. So, for somebody that's got a lot of 150 feet wide, they'd be looking at an annual assessment of about $1,350 just to pay for the debt service for that. And this is not, this is not, this is not an exact number. What we're looking at is an order of magnitude. You've got an exact number, you'd have to engineer and look at things of ledge.
You're doing a flyby.
Topography, what's an order of magnitude? So, it's at least $120 million. Then you're also looking at the engineering costs and, you know, boost the stations. So, you can add at least 20% of that cost. So, you're upwards of around about $150, $160 million to make that happen.
Now, are there grants available that are, to make it a safer community? Is there ways that we can get around it besides just the tax dollar, so we don't want to go that way, but?
Yeah, our experience is the only grants for extending water and sewer service, they usually couple together, are in the form of low-interest loans. And those, the communities that have the lower median family income tend to be more successful with those grants, of which unfortunately, in that respect, Londonderry would not be, would not be competitive in that area. So, I mean, we can, so those, that's just the highlights of those four areas. We can look further than any of those, but I just wanted to give the council a sense of the magnitude of a cost, and as far as the volunteers, the feasibility of changing our system to make that successful.
Yeah, I can remember we had that discussion back in the Budget Committee years ago about hydrants, it's just not feasible. It's a great idea, but it's just not feasible as far as economics goes. But at least we can look at the tanker issue and, you know, having them have the ability to at least have water on a scene to try to make a difference in case of an emergency like that.
Mr. Chairman, make a comment.
Okay.
Just on the volunteer firefighter, I think that, I wonder if there's a possibility, just for the sake of argument, to have the ability to kind of communicate with the public a little bit, to see what's actually out there as far as qualified people. I mean, I know we just talked about Pennsylvania, we talked about some information that we received, but same time, kind of bumping into people at Market Basket, bumping into people at TJ Maxx. So, I think there's some people that might be interested out there that could give us a different perspective. So, is there a way that we could kind of get people to come, is there a newspaper that we can put in, maybe an article, or not an article, but at least a request maybe, to see if people would be interested, the general public would be interested in something like that, or? In other words, see what kind of qualified individuals are out there that would want to help their community? And, I don't know, is there any?
Well, I don't see any harm in it. I mean, how would we go above that? What do you think?
Because then you could say-
If anything, it would add to the call firefighters, I guess.
Because then you could say, you know, undoubtedly, we didn't get, you know, much interest as people out there that, you know, may have the training.
We could put an ad in the local paper and see what kind of response it gets. And then, you know, depending on the response, then we have another decision to make. What do we do with that?
I forget which one of the captains told me, but I think they estimated something like we would need eight volunteers to get one. So, if you had eight, and you had them all trained and everything, to guarantee, you know, one to two would be available when you need them. And then they're throwing around numbers like, okay, if we need eight people to show up, then we need like a list of like 50 people. Or something, something along those lines is what they were estimating. And then to train an outfit, those 50 people, like eight grand apiece. So, it's, they just said it would be a very difficult balancing act, just based on what they've, what they've experienced with the call firefighters. I mean, maybe we'll get lucky. But, you know, I mean, but five years from now, I mean, maybe we won't have them anymore. I just, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm just trying to exhaust every single aspect of this, because I know, you know, we're looking to put more bodies in the Fire Department, and I understand that, but there's also going to, it's also going to be a tax rate impact, so, possibly. So, I want to make sure that I do everything I can to do diligence to make sure that we can, if we can reduce that tax impact, you know, through this method, that we will.
Maybe Kathleen Bailey will write a story about it.
Or maybe April.
Or Suzanne.
Or Suzanne.
Any takers? All three there? All right.
I have a question. If you have volunteer firefighters, one of them gets hurt, they covered by workers' comp?
They are.
They are. So, that's going to be a cost, so you'd have to-
That's correct. And what we'll do is we'll, so we'll put more information out about this.
No retirement, volunteers.
But what we'll also do is we'll, I'll get, I'll get another order of magnitude from the chief regarding the training requirement, because, you know, some citizens may think it's a great idea, but if they're, if they know the training component which is required along with it, then they-
Make shy away, yeah.
Make them more enthusiastic, or make temper their enthusiasm for it.
Well, it's a tough thing. One of my, one of my best friends is a volunteer firefighter in Auburn, and he works in Burlington, Mass. You know, so there was some-
That's where they come up with this ratio thing.
Couple, a couple of years ago, I mean, you know, we used to carpool a little bit when I could, when I was at another job, and, you know, I'd get a call at 4:30 in the morning that he's on a call, and he wouldn't be ready for, you know. It's a very tough thing. I mean, they can't respond to everything.
On the Hemlock fire, we heard how critical timeliness of the response was.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, if you're, if you're working out of town, or if you're asleep in your bed, and by the time you get to the fire, if it's, you know, half hour, 40 minutes into it, the utility of your presence may be very limited.
Yeah, because it's during the critical time.
You know, hey, I don't, it's worth looking at it, you know?
Yep, yep, I agree. So, is that, that's something we can do, Dave? Okay. And we have three wonderful people out in the audience that would be willing to help us, I'm sure.
Hey, also, any comment?
Sure.
I would, I would suggest, Dave, that when we look at the tanker equipment, that we also keep, and I know we do this probably anyway, but we keep in mind the potential of used equipment. I don't want any beaters or anything, but-
Well, as an example, when we bought the ladder truck, that was a demo.
Right.
And we saved $200,000.
Great. That's good to hear. See, you guys never, you never publish that kind of stuff, and let people know. That's a great, I'm glad you do that. I mean, it's good that you're looking out for, you know. I think it's good. Okay, any other questions for Dave?
So, on the same vein, are there any ways that we can possibly apply for something for a tanker truck to make it more safe? I know we talked, we went the avenue of firefighters, I know, I just asked the question about, is there anything about the apparatus, you know, if we-
Well, the Fire Department is continually searching for grants, applying for grants. It's just that, given the amount of grants available now compared to five, 10, 20 years ago, and the number of communities applying for it, there is an opportunity, is there, is there a good chance of receiving it? No. But that doesn't mean that the Fire Department doesn't exhaust those opportunities.
See, it seems to me that you have a town, okay, and obviously the state is above the town. You have a town that is struggling with water. We have, we don't have enough fire hydrants, and we don't have a tanker, water tanker truck. It would almost be, you know, this is like a perfect scenario of needing assistance in some, you know, some aspect.
They also, but they think that it gets back into everything like in our lives. It depends on need and financing ability. And they look at Londonderry, and we're not, we're not poor. So, they'll look at that and say, well, Londonderry, you can go out and afford it if you really need it. There are other, there are other prioritizations within the state, within, you know, the government. And I think that's something that would play into it.
And keep in mind, the way we do our vehicles is, we don't put 350,000, we may put the cash out, but we depreciate it over a period of time. So, the impact isn't all in one year.
I mean, Joe's got good points about hydroprotection and water. The challenge we have is that there are literally hundreds of communities in New Hampshire facing those same challenges, and thousands nationwide. That's why it's so competitive for us.
So, I know, I'll ask it one more time, and then I'll quit, because people are probably sick and tired of hearing it.
Ask me questions.
But with the hydrants, I know the number that we just talked about was ridiculously large. Is there any magical way that we could possibly do it somehow? I mean, I know the number's ridiculous, and it's crazy for me to even ask, but is there any magical financial way that we could, you know, put it on the ballot? I know it's crazy, but I'm just, before, before we, I mean, I don't know if the public really understands the, how important that is, and how important it is to their houses right now.
Well, I think-
When that, when that was, when that statement was made, that, you know, the residents of Londonderry aren't safe without that water, I mean, in that way, I just kind of went a little crazy and said, we got to somehow make them safe. And so, that's, I know the number was giant, but, I mean, if you look at number versus life, I mean, how can you put, it's hard to balance that, you know? So, I mean, in the Hemlock situation, that fire hydrant was a lot closer than most of our other homes would be. And that was even out of town. I mean, is that, is that correct, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's about 60% of our town which is not serviced by hydrants. And it's, you know, it's like everything else, it comes down to a cost-benefit analysis. You know, what are folks willing to invest out of their pockets to provide that? I wouldn't say Londonderry is not safe.
No, with the water I'm talking about.
Be safer with hydrants.
But you could also have a fire station on every corner.
And it's just a cost-benefit analysis of how much money folks want to invest in public safety, and what the benefit they see coming out of it. I mean, it's, you know, it's like every decision we make.
Because if it's on a four-year, I mean, we talked about putting it five, every 500 feet, well, if it's every 2,000 feet?
This is based on every 1,000 feet.
1,000 feet, so if it's every 2,000 feet, or, you know what I mean? Is there, are we just going to accept the way we are right now, or are we going to try to move forward at a slower pace, but to make it better in the long run? I mean-
Yeah, but by stretching the hydrants out further, I mean, I'm sure there's public safety implications, of which, you know, there's a folks that are more educated on that than I am, certainly. And that will impact your operating budget. As far as the $120 million, cutting the number of hydrants you have in half is really a small component of that. What the expense is, is the-
Running the water to everywhere.
The $150 per linear foot cost extending the water line. That's where all your money comes in.
But even with the hydrants, you still need the pumper truck to put the water on the fire, so.
That's correct.
Correct. By just bringing the tanker.
Right.
Bringing the tanker to where you need it, even if you needed to buy more.
Dave, as part of, part of the briefing that we got, there was talk about a follow-up briefing that we were going to invite the Fire Department to come in and give us a briefing, much like the Police Department did, on how to have a safe-
Right.
A safe home, and what, things that they can suggest to the public, that we'll be able to watch this on a replay on TV as to what they can do to make their, their home even more safe than it is now.
Right, the chief's working on it currently.
So, I guess the way to ask the question was, do we want to start to do some hydrants or not at all? I mean, I know, like I said, I'm beating this to death right now, because I don't think we're make, going to make any progress if we don't, like you said, I think you said it a few meetings ago, kind of learn from what our experiences were, and they, they were very tough experiences, but is it never, ever going to happen for Londonderry? We're never going to have hydrants, we're never going to have sewage underneath all of our, you know, roads, or we're never going to have water running. You know, somewhere, somebody said, I think this is a good idea, and I think it's going to be helpful for our town the next 50 years, and somebody started the effort, you know, and each one of these things have to have a starting point. So, I just, before we get off of it, I just want to make sure that we're, I'm not, I'm at least not comfortable with exploring it further, even if it's five a year, six a year, I don't know.
Can I, is that an assessment per, if you put a hydrant on my street, for example, is it assessed against me, or is it a town-wide test?
Town-wide.
Okay, so if you did it partially, means everybody's paying for one person's street or three people's streets, or whatever.
It's a pretty tough sell, dude.
There's also, going forward, I mean, I haven't, we haven't seen the master plan yet, but I would assume that a new development like the Woodmont development will probably have fire hydrants, and will have municipal water laid in as part of the development. So, there'll be, a growing percentage of the community will, more and more. So, you know, that, that's one way to look at it, is also as, as new developments come to town, that's something that we ask the Planning Board to consider, so laying in some of those water lines is part of the development.
It's a lot easier to do that, too.
Can we write legislation to do that? Make it legal?
I know you can make sewers mandatory if they're within so many feet of a sewer line. I'm not sure, I have to check with Bart about water, but sewer, you're definitely going to.
I just, I just feel like it's an opportunity now, something's kind of knocking on my head to kind of start this now, and years from now, maybe it'll save some lives. I mean, you know?
You know, the other thing, too, to consider, Joe, is after a tragedy like that, there's always a tendency for people to overreact. It's been 20 years, it was about 20 years from the Hemlock fire to the fire before that I think we lost somebody. So, unfortunately, it's just, sometimes no matter what you do, you can put a hydrant in every corner, but that doesn't mean it's going to save a house or a life.
I just don't, I just don't know that until-
And I understand that, but all I'm trying to say is that the fiscal reality of it is, at this point, it would add too much.
Yeah.
And where I, you know, me, I'm speaking as one counselor. I can't, I can't say put that in the budget right now. I wouldn't want to, just because of, we're going to have enough things on our plate to deal with.
I just think that report, and I'll be quiet now, but I mean, I just think that report really opened a lot of people's eyes, that they didn't realize how far hydrants were from their homes, so that's all.
I appreciate that. Anything else? All right, moving on to new business. Can I get someone to read Ordinance 2011-10? Which is relative to revisions of the municipal code, Title VI, Chapter VI, Purchasing Policy.
Mr. Chairman, I'll volunteer read it.
Thanks.
This is a, an ordinance that will require a public hearing, so this will be introduced this evening on October 17th, and we'll have a second reading and a public hearing scheduled for November 7th. Whereas the Town Council continues to review all town ordinances, and whereas the council requires transparency in all transactions which utilize public funds, and whereas acquisitions which utilize public funds, and whereas acquisitions under the town's purchasing policy should clearly extend to all employees and volunteers involved with the expenditure of town funds, now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Londonderry that the municipal code, code of the town of Londonderry Title VI, Town Policy, Chapter VI, Purchasing Policy is hereby amended as attached. And, Mr. Chairman, I would motion that we accept this first reading and schedule that public hearing for November seventh.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any questions from the council before we vote on it?
Mm-hmm.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye to move this to public hearing November second?
Seven.
Seven. Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, five zero, to move it to public hearing. Okay, resolution two thousand eleven dash sixteen, which is a relative to a memorandum of agreement for conservation land acquisitions. Tom Frieda?
Well, yours, baby.
Resolution two thousand eleven dash sixteen, a memorandum of understanding conservation land acquisition. First reading is October seventeenth, two thousand eleven. Whereas the town voters have invested in the acquisition of conservation land to preserve the character and aesthetics of the community, and whereas the town council and conservation commission agree that the process by which land is acquired should be formalized to ensure continued public confidence in the process, and whereas the council and conservation commission have agreed on a structure to implement this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Londonderry Town Council that chairman of the town council is hereby authorized to sign the attached memorandum of agreement with the conservation commission chair to govern the conservation land acquisition process. The memorandum of agreement is attached.
Okay, so that's a motion. Get a second.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Discussion from the council?
Start over with John.
Um, no, it pretty much has what, um, I understand is supposed to be in its own self.
Okay, Tom?
I, I think this is good. This is a step forward. This involves the, the purchasing and site selection process to, to the next level, to continue to add to the level of transparency, and as the resol, as the resolution said, to continue the confidence that the public has in this process. I think it's a very positive step, and I would support it.
Thank you, Tom. Tom?
No, I'm not.
Joe?
No, I think it's a great, this is the same, the same steps that we talked about.
Yes, yeah.
Yep, I hadn't had a chance to read it yet.
Dave, can you just, for the people out there that haven't seen this, can you just give us a flyover?
Sure. One of the council's goals this year was to, was to make the process of acquiring conservation land hopefully more transparent without, without compromising the town's negotiating position. So the, the council and cons comm have agreed to a process whereby there would be a negotiating committee consisted of some staff members and members of the council and the conservation commission. Just to go through those, that, that process to make the process much more transparent. Again, we're, we're walking that fine line between transparency and making sure that we don't do a lot of the business in public session, which is, I'm sure as people understand, negotiate for the purpose of like buying their home. You have to have some, some confidential discussion to make sure the town is, is, continues to receive the best value for when investing these conservation lands. So both parties have agreed to the set procedure in the, in the resolution, and I suspect, well, we'll be using this process for future acquisitions. I think future acquisitions, I think the conservation commission is now probably consummating one to three or four deals a year, depending upon what comes up and availability of funds. So, again, it, and it completes one of the goals established by the council for this fiscal year.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Had discussion. All those in favor of resolution two thousand eleven dash sixteen, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, motion passes five zero. Okay, resolution two thousand eleven dash seventeen.
Great.
All right.
Resolution two thousand eleven dash seventeen, an order relative to a lot adjustment at eighty-five, eighty-seven Pillsbury Road. Whereas the town secured a conservation easement on property owned by Richard and Deborah Higgins located at eighty-five slash eighty-seven Pillsbury Road, and whereas the terms of the easement allowed the Higgins to complete a lot line adjustment, but restricted that right to the Higgins only and not their heirs, executives, administrators, assigns, and subsequent title holders. Whereas the property is now in the name of a trust with Richard and Deborah Higgins as trustees, and whereas the town's legal council concurs that the lot line adjustment under the present town ownership does not violate the restrictions included in the conservation easement, now therefore be resolved by the Londonderry Town Council that the town manager is hereby authorized to execute documents agreeing to allow the completion of the lot line adjustment at eighty-five, eighty-seven Pillsbury Road. So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Discussion, John?
I think that came into the planning board back when I was still on it. It all seemed very reasonable at the time. Those of you not familiar with the property, it's the one with the lone chair on, on Pillsbury on the right. And I think we entered into the conservation easement because it was one of the sole properties left for multifamily dwellings, and this was to, to protect that from expanding, because it was right behind Century Village.
Tom?
I'm good.
Tom?
No, I'm all set.
Joe?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. All right, motion and a second. All those in favor of resolution two thousand eleven dash seventeen, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, motion carries five zero.
I have to make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented for our meeting for nine twenty-six, two thousand eleven.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of council minutes for nine twenty-six, signifying by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, five zero. Minutes of nine twenty-six are now in the books. Other business, liaison reports. We'll start off with John.
Uh, let's see. Oh, we had the first meeting of the dispatch committee. Officers were put in place. Dispatch committee will not have a report ready by the end of October. It appears that it will probably be able to do their due diligence through November, and have, they're going to make every attempt to have something back to the council before the holidays, so we have something to look at for budget.
Cool. That's a good thing.
And what else was there? Was there anything else? Well, the school board did meet. I think they, the words they used were, they do not see a need for change in the SAU office in these foreseeable future.
CIP?
CIP was adopted by the planning board.
Cool.
But I think that was at the planning board meeting.
Okay. Sorry. Still your thunder. Well, he's the CIP chair, so, anyway. Tom?
Uh, the Merrimack Valley Water District is in its final stages of, of negotiation, not the right term, but settlement, I guess, as the city of Nash where it goes through a settlement process with, with Penacheek Water Works. And we're, we are an interested party, and as part of the Merrimack Valley Water District. And those negotiations are privileged legal negotiations, so I won't say any more, other than the fact that they're underway.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Tom?
As John mentioned, the CIP was approved by the planning board. If I'm right, I think the only thing that's coming up for this year is the road bond.
I believe, well, that would be up to us, what we recommend. If we were able to, I think we put a provision in there, we were able to get grant money for Pettingill Road, we would entertain that, but without other funding, we wouldn't be going, the CIP committee is at least saying they would not deem it necessary to go to the taxpayers for money. I think that's what they said.
Yeah. And the other matter that was at the planning board was possible improvements to Page Road, and I think questions are going out to the police, fire, and public, no, to the school department, excuse me, regarding the possible, what possible adjustments would be acceptable to that. Okay, Joe?
Had a couple of meetings, master plan steering committee, looking at RFPs, and then also trying to look at survey companies to, and what kind of questions we want on the survey, and trying to, awareness, I'm actually on a subcommittee to go through that process as well. So we're tracking along. It's going to be a long process, we all understand that, but we want to make sure it's-
Done right.
A process done right, and also actionable items that are actually, you know, that are going to be done, so.
Keep at it.
Yeah.
I had traffic safety today, which unfortunately I missed. Maybe, Dave, you could, did you guys have anything on the agenda tonight?
Mr. Dalton came in to talk about traffic issues on hall roads, so Chief Hart will follow up with those, and directed patrols, and some observations, hopefully address those concerns. And that was the only order of business we had at the traffic safety committee meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was my only one. The only other thing I forgot to bring up during public comment, that I wanted the council to entertain, for budget season, as it fast approaches, I had a thought to try to streamline the process of hearings as far as having staff come in. So one of the thoughts that I wanted to throw out here to the, to the guys is to maybe set a limit as far as what departments to bring in, you know what I mean? Like, the trustees of the trust, the voters checklist, do we really need those people to have to come in? I mean, pretty much, they deal with you directly and staff. So what I guess, what I'm trying to suggest is that we, we could possibly streamline it if we set a cap on, if your budget isn't over X, you really don't have to come in and present anything. So I, I just thought it would streamline things and allow us to really kind of delve into the bigger budgets, which is what we usually do anyway. So I just wanted to throw it out to the council and see what the, what the feedback was.
Well, I mean, well, like you said, the, the checklist, I think they're what, three thousand or four thousand bucks?
Depends if it's an election year or not, but they're, they're in that order of magnitude.
Right. But e- even at that, I mean, if their budget went up five percent, it was fourteen thousand to fourteen five, I mean, perhaps that's something we can delegate to, to you. I don't think they need to come in and talk to us about that. But maybe if we set it at like, I don't know, half a million or whatever, that way we can concentrate, like Willie Sutton said, where the money is, you know?
If I can suggest this, is let me receive the budgets from departments, which I'll probably receive by the end of this week. Then I'll send an email to the council, reply to me directly, not to each other.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll, I'll give you a suggested, a suggested plan, and along those lines of trying to focus on the, on the big ticket items. And if there's a small departments who are requesting additional personnel, as an example, I'll make sure they come in. And then just give me some feedback, how comfortable you feel with that, and based upon the feedback, I'll set up a schedule for that meeting, which is really on the nineteenth, that Saturday morning. Does that work?
I, I just, like I said, I was just thinking about it, and I figured I'll toss it out and see what you guys think. It may or may not save us time, but I figured, what the hell, might as well ask.
Let me take a look at it.
Okay, perfect. Dave, that leaves us up to you.
Yeah, that's a good segue to get to my report, which is very brief, and I hope you appreciated the short meeting this evening. It'll be the last short meeting until the first of the year, because I'm scheduled to give the council an overview of our FY13 budget at your next meeting on the seventh. Then you have your meeting scheduled, which Marg will put together, but please note, the meeting on the nineteenth is Saturday, it's not seven PM, we're going to start at eight AM, and just walk through and bring lunch in. So, again, this year-
Cutting into our cartoons, huh?
So that's why I invented DVR. Just remember this year is that we, we don't finish up the process in preparation for town meeting in the first week of February. We now finish up the first week of January, because of our deliberative session process, which is, the meeting will be held, I believe, on February sixth. So we'll be, the staff will be totally into budget between now and November seventh. So you'll have the budget for about twelve days, where you're going to have questions and answers, and again, based on what I see. And I'll get that proposed review schedule to you prior to the seventh, so then at that meeting, you have a discussion whether you feel comfortable with it or adjust it. So we'll just schedule according to your desires for the nineteenth.
Does that move up, if anybody had a petition article, when they have to?
It, it does. I don't want to, I don't want to, we'll get the date. I believe it's the first week in January. I don't think I have it here, but it's about a month earlier, as you can probably well imagine. So it's no longer in, it's probably the first week in January. Of course, I don't have it, but we'll get that out. But it's like the first week of January for petition warrant articles. Same criteria in a reform of government, twenty-five signatures. We strongly suggest that you send a copy along, so we have the town council review it, the town attorney review it to make sure it's legal. Again, we don't have any interest, frankly, in what the, what the subject matter is, we just want to make sure that you don't go out, get the signatures, and find out that it's an invalid petition in violation of state law.
Election Day, is that still the same?
Election Day, yeah. I mean, frankly, the only difference for us is that your Saturday town meeting is being moved up a month, and those decisions made there are not final. The final decision will be made at that Tuesday vote, which is still the second Tuesday in March.
Okay.
And once the voters complete their validating on that date, then our process is ended for the year.
Okay, perfect. All right. Okay, so that's it, Dave?
That's it.
Okay. Board committee appointments and reappointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint to the Londonderry Arts Council two ad hoc positions, Suzanne Hannah and Jason Williams, and also as full members, and also Karen Giger as an alternate member, as well as reappointing Susan Hausler from an alternate member on the elderly affairs committee to a full member with her term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twelve.
Second that? Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes affirmative, five zero. Welcome aboard, and thank you very much for stepping forward.
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion, second?
Point of order.
Okay.
Did you ever ask the audience if they had any other public comments?
I did. I did.
Going once, going twice?
I did. Why, do you have something?
Do you have any?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, point of order.
That was a point of order.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Quickly, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Karen, for a wonderful evening of fun and entertainment. And we can't wait for budget season.